Okay. I'm ready to begin. The time is 5:31. I'll call to order the meeting of the Hingham Select Board on December 14, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, I'll note for the record that the members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. First order business for us is to approve the minutes, and I'm prepared to take a motion on the minutes of December 1st and 7th. Bill and Liz, are you prepared to proceed?
Prepared.
Okay, I'll accept the motion on the minutes of December 1st.
I make a motion to approve the minutes on December 1st, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
And I'll prepare to accept the motion on the December 7th minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 7, 2021.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Next, we will move into a joint session with the Board of Assessors. I'll ask the Board of Assessors to call their meeting to order.
Call the Board of Assessors meeting to order 5:33 PM, Tuesday, December 14, 2021.
Thank you. So we are here to, with joint session, to fill a vacancy, a current vacancy on the Board of Assessors. In many ways, this is a interim appointment, because whoever is appointed only serves until the town election coming up in the spring when whoever wants to run would run, and then that person would fill the role on a more permanent basis. So at this point, we have three residents who are willing to serve the town on the Board of Assessors, Al Chambers, Deb Brockney, and Michelle Larned. All three have clearly made it clear that they are devoted to the town. All three are talented, and all three have indicated their interest in running in the town election this coming spring to be elected to the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors is unique among elected boards, at least as far as I can tell, because there's a state law that requires assessors to be trained in a program conducted or sponsored by the Mass Commissioner of Revenue. And until that program requirements are complete, an assessor is not fully trained. The Code of Mass Regulations actually provides that any person who is elected or appointed as an assessor is required to complete basic courses of training and pass an examination prepared by the Commissioner. So what that means is that someone we appoint now will need to be fully trained, and most likely that training would not be completed prior to election time this spring. And that applies to two of the candidates. One of the candidates, Al Chambers, is already trained and certified, and would be able to proceed and really work until until there's an election, when that person's successor would be elected. So I would be interested in getting the thoughts of the others participating this evening, and then we are going to proceed to a vote. So with that, I'll ask Chrissy if you wanted to say anything, and then I'll ask Josh.
Sure, thank you. I agree with a lot of what you just said. I feel like I would be fine if any of the three candidates were appointed tonight. I understand it's only temporary, and then somebody would run to be elected, and I believe it's April, but not too far off. I think there's some benefit to Al rejoining us, because he does know what he's doing there. But I think there's also benefit to somebody new coming on, especially somebody, you know, with a lot of energy that wants to get involved in the town. So I don't think there's a poor choice tonight. I would be happy to work with any of the three and, you know, try to bring them up to speed and work together, answer questions. I would say there's a long learning curve in this role. I'm still learning, and I'll be learning, and, you know, for years to come, provided I'm also reelected come April. So on one hand, I'm not too worried about somebody not having a lot of experience right off the bat, and on the other hand, especially given the times wherein it could be handy to have somebody experienced. So I think that was a lot of talking and probably not a lot of, you know, saying anything to, you know, fantastic right there, but that, those are my feelings. I, you know, I work well with anybody, and I'm just thrilled that we have three people willing to do this. I know this is one of those roles that pretty much flies under the radar. So I'm interested to hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And it may fly under the radar, and it may be underappreciated, but it shouldn't be, because the work that you do is vital, vital to the town. Josh?
So I would just say that the, the, the training part of it, while extremely important, the state does give you two years to, to finish it. So I am still going through the material. It is actually very interesting material, and we should probably share it. But that's another discussion for another time. So I would, you know, my preference is to pick one of the two women who came up front first and said that they were willing to do it and, and showed interest in it. You know, I know Deb personally. I think she would be great at it. She actually applied to be in the Assessor's Office, which shows me that she actually has some real interest in the department and the role. I don't know Michelle that well, but I know her enough through interview process and her, her campaign to know that she is definitely dedicated to the town and would do a, a really good job. You know, what I have seen over the last six or seven months is that, you know, you need to have a good head on your shoulders. You need to, you know, collaborate with other members of the board and, and the office. You need to listen a little bit, because like Chrissy said, we all don't know everything, and there's a lot of moving parts in the office, and I'll say it again. Erin, her team does a tremendous job keeping all those parts moving. But I've always been the, you know, of the notion that this town needs new blood in these types of roles, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Chambers. It is just, you know, I've said it for years that we shouldn't discourage people who want to do this stuff to do it. And I think by selecting Mr. Chambers, you're going to discourage two people from potentially running in April who would normally, probably wouldn't run, but now, given the chance, would probably run for this role at the next election. So that's my, you know, my thoughts. Like I said, I, I think Deb would be great. I would be happy if you guys chose Michelle. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Josh, just to correct one thing, I believe that the law requires a training to be completed within one year.
I'll check again, but I'm 99% sure it's two years.
I actually have the reg open in front of me, and it's, it's within one year of following election or appointment, or within two years from the effective date of the regulation.
I knew it's our two years somewhere.
Right, right, but the regulations have been in place, so it is one year.
Yep.
So, so hopefully you're, you're progressing in your.
I am, I am. They're, they're, just so, just so you know, they are, there are 10 one-hour modules that you have to kind of go through, and it's, you know, it's not difficult. It's just, there's a lot of information, and you kind of stop and look. So just, just for your information, that's what it is.
Yep. Liz?
Well, I certainly agree with, with what has been said. I think we don't have any bad choices. We're, we're very lucky that we have three good candidates. I have been impressed with, with all three in terms of their dedication and willingness to step up and serve in Hingham. And to Josh's point, certainly want to encourage that and foster that as much as we can. My only concern would be, you know, the ramp-up time and if, how heavy of a lift it is from January to April, trying to get up to speed, attend meetings, be part of the abatement process, take the training, and potentially run a campaign. So that would be my only hesitation with the, the two newer candidates.
And Bill, I know we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Yeah, so generally agree with all the comments that have been said. I thought all three, I appreciate all three candidates stepping forward. I certainly appreciate the work that the Board of Assessor does. You know, I really like Deb's background as a small business owner. There's a lot of value that that would bring to the board. Love Michelle's energy for getting involved. She ran a great campaign last spring. And certainly, you know, Al's experience during his interview last Tuesday night was, was very impressive. So all three candidates bring a lot to the table. Were very impressive, so liked all three of them.
Okay. It's not necessary, but I'm asking Tom or Michelle or Art if there's anything else you wanted to weigh in on?
Nope, I think it's been a good process. We got, you know, a number of good candidates, like everyone said, and the interviews have gone, have gone through properly.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we are fortunate that we have three folks. I think that the very process, process of selecting one of the three would, would possibly discourage the other two from running, but that is likely to be true no matter which one we, we select. So I think we need to, to move forward and make a selection, knowing that, again, there will be an election come the spring. And just, just so everyone is aware, the date of that election may be in flux depending upon what we, what the town decides with respect to town meeting and COVID issues. But it will definitely be in the spring. The date is, is uncertain. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to start, I'm going to make a motion. If it passes, then we'll have a person. If not, then we'll go to the next person, and we'll see, we'll see what happens. So I, I'm going to make a motion for Al Chambers to serve on the Board of Assessors until the town election in spring. Is, is there a second?
I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We now vote and do a roll call. I'll start with Chrissy.
Um, I'm, I would be supportive of that. I, I'm, I don't want to belabor this. I know this has been a strange situation, so I would be, if that's your choice and that's who most of the people want, I would be fine if Al filled this role. I would also love as many people to, you know, run as, as wants to in April.
So what I am hoping for is a yea or nay?
I guess I'll be a yea.
Okay. Josh?
Nay.
Liz?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
So by my count, that is a four to one, and we have our new, new candidate. I mean, we have our new person on the Board of Assessors. And so, Tom, if you can make sure that the office notifies him and also thanks the other two. And I know Al knows that this is only until the spring. And then we'll see what happens then. Great.
Thank you.
So is there, let me go back to the agenda, because I don't want to adjourn the Board of Assessors until, is there anything else that they need to address at this point? I'm not aware of it. Chrissy?
No, I don't think so. We're, we have our own meeting in two days. Erin, did you have anything you wanted to say or add, or?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay.
Then do you want to adjourn your, your board, and then we'll proceed with the Select Board?
Motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors?
Second.
Roll call, Josh?
Aye.
Chrissy?
Aye.
Thank you, Josh and Chrissy. The, the time was, may not have been convenient for everyone, but I appreciate your accommodating our schedule.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next item for us, if you'll bear with me, is to move into executive session. The purpose of the executive session would be to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, national opioid litigation involving McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc. Oops, someone just stole my screen from me. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and second reason is to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. So, and the Board would reconvene in open session following the executive session. I will accept the motion to move into executive session on those terms.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
We will adjourn to executive session and then reconvene in open session. Thank you. Okay, the Select Board is now returning to open session, having concluded our executive session. Next item on the agenda is for the Board to consider a potential vote on, regarding approval of a settlement participation forms for the distributor settlement and the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement with respect to the national opioid litigation. And I believe we have with us Attorney Curry Ryan. Are you here, Curry?
Yes.
There you are. Good. So please, just explain what is being presented and what the, what your recommendation is.
All right. The Attorney General for Massachusetts has entered into a settlement agreement on a national scale on class action, or various cases against opioid distributors and a manufacturer. The distributors are Cardinal, McKesson, and AmerisourceBergen, and the opioid manufacturers, Johnson &amp; Johnson. So she has entered into a settlement agreement, as have most of the other states. The settlement agreement provides for some good benefits over a very long period of time for opioid abatement remediation and assistance to both the state and the municipalities. The benefits, the overall benefits are $26 billion approximately, if the settlement goes through completely. The amount that the Attorney General has estimated Massachusetts would receive would be approximately $500 million. However, those payments are over the course of, it looks like, at least 18 years. And they also would then be broken down between both the state and the municipalities. The state's portion is guided by an opioid recovery and remediation fund, which has put together a group of individuals pursuant to a recent statute that guides that fund. With regard to the municipalities, the Attorney General has determined that the Town of Hingham, of any funds that are distributed to municipalities, if we agree to the settlement, is .483, so a little less than one-half of 1% would come to the Town of Hingham. And so the Attorney General had strongly recommended that all cities and towns in Massachusetts join this settlement. The town has not initiated any separate litigation against opioid manufacturers or distributors. So participating in this settlement would be something that you have not paid attorney fees or participated in the litigation in order to get there. So it would seem that based upon the Attorney General's recommendation, there would be no reason for the town not to join this opioid settlement. The purpose of it, as I say, is, is the funds are to be used toward opioid abatement. So if the town does receive it, you would then, in subsequent meetings later on, make determinations as to what the fund should go to.
Carrie, thank you. Bill, any questions?
I have no questions. I see this as a, as a real upside benefit to the town. I know that as we discussed in executive session, a lot of the rules regarding how we can use the funds are still kind of being worked out by the AG's office. But as I said, hopefully, a lot of this money can be used to help treat individuals dealing with issues related to opioid use. So I think this is a huge benefit to the town. I'm looking, and I'm excited to sign on to this.
Great. Liz?
I agree. I don't have any additional questions. I think it makes sense for us to move forward with this. It seems like very little risk to us, and certainly, you know, those funds can be put to good use to help people in the community.
And I agree with my colleagues. Carrie, thank you for your, for your work here. And I am prepared to accept a motion to move forward on this.
I make a motion, authorize the Chair to sign the subdivision settlement participation form, distributor settlement, and the form attached here, too.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
We have another motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign the settlement participation form, J&amp;J settlement in the form attached here, too.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Thank you, and Carrie, thanks for keeping on top of this and for making sure that we act in a timely manner.
Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye. Next item on our agenda is to consider a potential vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association. And I believe David Pace and Chief Jones will be leading this discussion. Where is David Pace? And you are muted, so.
He's muted.
There we go.
Sorry about that. I think by now it'd be better to Zoom, but, sorry. So yeah, David Pace from the Personnel Board and here with the Chief to propose to the Board of, Select Board a memorandum of agreement with the Police Patrolmen's Association. Chief Jones and I worked on this as a team, together with Michelle Montegor, Assistant TA as well as Jack Manning, Karen Johnson from the Personnel Board, and Chief, Deputy Chief O'Shea. And also like to just point out and thank the bargaining team for the Patrolmen's Association, led by Officer Jerry Sullivan, for their collaborative efforts, their reasonableness, and their hard work to try and reach a fair and reasonable deal with the town and for the patrol. I think things went relatively smoothly and calmly throughout. So I appreciate their, their energy and efforts throughout the process.
David, just before you continue, just so Jerry Sullivan knows, I'm going to be calling him after this for his comments on this.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So just to run through the terms of the agreement we've reached, it has been ratified by the Union as of last week. It's very similar to the memorandum of agreement we reached with the Police Superiors Union. It would call for, in the first instance, an equity adjustment to the salary. As folks know, we have a 20-town comparison list, and we aim to compensate our employees just above the median. On that 20-town list, the police patrol officers had dropped below the median, and so we made an equity adjustment of roughly $1.28, I believe, per hour for the patrol officer level to move them above the median. And then, as with the superiors and many of our other unions this year, we settled on a 3% general wage increase for each year of the contract. It is a three-year contract commencing as of July 1, 2021. And so there would be a 3% wage increase effective as of July 1, 2021, July 1, 2022, and July 1, 2023. In addition to that, one of the elements that the town was looking to implement, is looking to implement is a new body worn camera policy within the police force. The patrol officers have agreed to the policy, as have the superior officers. In the case with the patrol officers, as was the case with the Union, we agreed in exchange for their agreement to where the body cam, or agreed to the body cam policy, for an additional 1% general wage increase to the patrol officers effective as of the ratification of the memorandum of agreement, which allows us to go forward and begin to implement the policy from here. Last element of the contract is, deals with longevity, and I guess two elements of that. One is, we rolled forward a date of eligibility for longevity benefits for any officer who was employed as of January, I'm sorry, July 1, 27, 2021. It had been 2017 prior to that. We also agreed to increase the amount of longevity payments, benefits available to the patrol officers by $100 for each stage. They received the benefit after they've been here for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and 25 years. There's an increasing amount, and we increased the steps by $100 at each stage. And I believe, I believe that's it. Must I'm missing something? Now, Chief Jones, if anything you want to add or any question?
Can you just, you may have already covered this, the duration of the contract?
Three years, yeah. It's a three-year contract starting as of July 1, 2021.
Great. Chief Jones, anything you wanted to add?
I think Dave covered it perfectly, but I did want to extend my thanks to the Personnel Board and the patrol union leadership team for working so diligently towards and throughout the negotiations. I'm really thankful that we work with such a committed and hard-working team of officers, and I look forward to a continued partnership with them for the contract.
Right. I see Jerry Sullivan. Actually, I don't see you. I just see your name. Do you have a camera that's working? There we go. And, thank you. So we appreciate your efforts and invite you to give us any comments you have on the, on the agreement.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me, Chairman. I'd just like to extend from the HBPA a thank you to the Bargaining Committee, the Personnel Board, the Chief, the Assistant Town Administrator, Montegor. Like David Pace said, it was a collaborative effort. A lot of hard work went into it. An open communication dialogue was, was key in settling, and from all of us, we appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. And you know that your department is a valued asset to this town, and we do appreciate your, your devotion to the town. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I will note for the record that Bill Ramsey is recusing himself from this discussion and participation in, on this, on this topic. So I'm going to turn to Liz Klein to see if you have any comments or questions.
Yes. Well, thank you to everyone involved, the Personnel Board and the patrol leadership. It sounds like it was a very collaborative process. So thank you for everyone's hard work. I was glad to see the equity adjustment. I think that's an important part of, of the strategy, and certainly we want to be fair, and I think, you know, it helps with recruitment and retention, and, and hopefully demonstrates how much we appreciate the, the hard work that the Police Department does day in and day out. So I was glad to see that, as well as the increase. Thank you for explaining the, the body word camera policy. I think that that makes a lot of sense, and glad to see that we're moving forward with that. So thank you to everyone involved.
Great. And Chief Jones, just, I don't know if you want to say a few words about the grant opportunities that are now open to the town, having adopted a body camera policy?
Sure. So now that we have an agreed-upon policy from both Unions, the town can apply for.
the town can apply for anticipated grant funding from the state as well as federal grant opportunities that'll be upcoming. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to apply for and be awarded funding towards the implementation of the body worn cameras in the very near future.
Great. Thank you. Town Administrator Mayo, any anything you wanted to add?
Just echoing, you know, what you've already said, Joe, the the work the police department does is 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 second to none. I mean, you know, Jerry, you guys know you the last year has been extraordinarily difficult for a number of reasons. And you guys never wavered. You were right there. So thank you for everything you guys do.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Are there any members of the public with questions on this topic? Seeing none, I am prepared to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Police Patrolmen's Association effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that. And we do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe? I and Bill, do you want to record your abstention?
Yes, I'll abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it? It's approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Jones, stick around. We're going to need you for some other things.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, okay. Next item on our agenda is a audit committee presentation of the fiscal year 21 financial report. And Tom, I'm going to let you introduce the representatives from the audit committee.
Absolutely. So we have Rob Schickel from the Audit Committee, Sue Nickerson, of course, our town accountant staffs the Audit Committee, and Jim Pietrowski from CLA, Clifton Larson Allen is is here as their representative.
Okay, so who will who will lead this discussion?
I assume Rob.
Yep, it's me. Sorry. I pulled me to myself there. So all right, thank you for the opportunity to come before you, the the town this evening. I'm here representing the Audit Committee. As Tom noted, it includes the town administrator, town accountant. Clifton Larson Allen is our our auditors and the committee is made up of myself, Leonetta Scapini, Doug Farrington, Katie Goslin, and we actually have one open seat on the committee currently. And we have two liaisons to the advisory from the Advisory Committee, Alan McDonald and Matthew Goulet. So I'm here to present the town's financial statements. The federally required single audit and management letter. And per our charter, the Audit Committee met on multiple occasions over the past year to review the following reports as prepared by CLA. As Tom noted, Jim Pietrowski is here in support of it. So if you have any questions, Jim is well equipped to answer them. So what you should have in your files before you, I guess if this were impersonal for you in front of you on your desk, but you should have copies of the Town of Hingham Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The Town of Hingham GAO and Uniform Guidance Reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. Town of Hingham Contributory Retirement System Pension Plan Schedules for the year ended December 31st, 2020. And the Town of Hingham Management Letter dated June 30th, 2021, discussing internal controls, ongoing status of previously reported items and review of upcoming regulatory changes. So moving on to some of the key findings from our from CLA, the auditors. First, CLA had no material disagreements with management, a good thing, obviously. Second, the audited financial statements received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that a government unit can receive. It indicates that the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and that they are fairly presented in all material respects. Third notable is that this is the first full audit cycle to include the Weir River Water System. Fourth, although the management letter was issued, no material weaknesses were identified in internal controls over the financial reporting. I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions on any of those previous items. Hearing none, I'll keep going. There are a couple of additional items the committee would like to note for the board. First, the committee notes that although the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, Shrek as it's affectionately known, is outside the scope of the committee's charter, due to changes in the makeup of the board of this this board, the committee would like to refresh two items from previous years for any of the new board members. So first, Shrek has not undergone an audit since it was formed, and this is in contrast to its stated charter. And then second, there was a deposit by Shrek of a check intended for the Town of Hingham received in error. It was supposed to have been paid back to Hingham under an agreement after it was discovered. This is a pending matter that's again gone on for a couple of years. These are not earth shattering events, but just reoccurring issues that we thought that this group should be aware of. Additionally, the town has received a strategic achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the GFOA. So the Government Financial Officers Association for the Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This is the 25th annual or 25th award. They're not automatic and kudos go largely to Sue Nickerson and her group for making this happen. They, like I said, they do not come automatically and they definitely don't come automatically for 25 years. So a huge, huge plus for the town. And I would also note that based on a vote by the committee and then also in follow-up by the town, I think through Tom's office, the there was agreement to continue the engagement with CLA, Clifton Larson Allen for the a second engagement. So this would be consistent with the the contract agreements in place with CLA. So these are before you, all these documents before you. I'm happy to answer any questions or have Jim answer any specific questions on behalf of CLA.
What was, if I can, what was the dollar amount of the check that you referred to that was deposited by Shrek?
Leave it in the 150 range. Is that right, Rob? They're around 150 grand if I remember right.
155.
And Tom?
The Shrek Board is aware of all this. We've talked about it a couple of times. There's been some debate about allocation requirements from the and what's, you know, appropriate and isn't. And it always requires a level of local or historical knowledge that I can never provide when I'm sitting in the conversation with them. So one of these days when we do this, I'm going to need to bring in someone that was here to answer the questions that come up because I can never get around to answering that question properly. But I it's just they've acknowledged that it's owed. The question is in in what? In what manner it's owed? And it won't be hard. It won't be difficult to get repaid.
Is there any manner other than cash?
So what I mean, what I'm talking about is right now, the entirety of the Shrek budget is allocated based on population and call volume and
Right.
you know, the Hingham 50%, Norwell 20%, stuff like that. So there's always a there's an ongoing debate about, not debate is too strong a word, is a discussion about whether or not the the Hingham share should be with included in the in the repayment or not and from the at the year. And I believe the answer is not, but I need to walk. I need to have historical knowledge in place when I'm having that conversation with them to to drill that home. So we've had the conversation a couple of times and I've just never been able to answer the extent of the questions that are raised.
And just the other Shrek issue, have we, has the town requested an audit?
We have. Yep, it's in their budget this year. So I would expect it will go forward this year. As a matter of fact, CLA will be giving us a quote, us meaning the Shrek in this in this instance. I'm wearing my Shrek hat for a second. The Jim, Jim's group at CLA will be giving us a giving us a quote for performing a one-year audit.
Great. Bill, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was gonna ask. So the plan for Shrek is to do an audit this year, Tom, early 22?
Yes, and it's in the budgets this year.
So it would be budgets from all of the towns that share.
That's right. Yeah, it's in the annual budget from the town, from the from the organization. And the way that's funded is through assessments from each of the four towns.
And for it's us, Norwell,
Pass it, no, not Situate.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I got.
Liz, any any questions?
Just following up on that in the management letter, is is the Shrek kind of next steps? Do you see that as the highest priority for us to focus on in terms of these recommendations?
Do I or Rob?
Or Rob?
Yeah, I think we raise it as a as a point of information for this group, recognizing there's some new members and that it's a lingering matter. In the grand scheme of things, in the overall spend of the town, it's, I don't want to say it's de minimis, but it's kind of close to that. So but I think it's more just a matter of something that needs to get cleaned up than than a financial dollar figure.
Okay, thank you.
I would add to that that I would like to get these things cleaned up too, you know? The goal every year with Miss Sue and I always laugh about this is the management letter with no comments. We, you know, it's kind of like the unicorn. You're not really, you always, you know, think you might be able to get it, but you're not quite sure. But anyway, that would be the goal. If we can get these long-term items off of there, we'd have a better shot at it. So.
Definitely.
And just just one final question. And Sue, you may be the better person, or I'm not sure who's the right person to answer this. Is there anything in what the Audit Committee has discussed or disclosed that gives us concern with respect to our rating by the bond agencies?
I don't know. Jim wants to weigh in on this, but I do not see anything. No.
I would I would agree with Sue on that standpoint.
Great. So I'll ask members of the public if they have any comments or questions on the Audit Committee presentation for fiscal year 21. Seeing none, I think there's a long list of people who've participated. And we appreciate all you've done here. So thank you.
Joe, if I if I might, I would just want to throw in an additional comment here. It's been great working with Sue and Jim and CLA over the last few years. I'm term limited, so this is the last time that you'll see me in in an Audit Committee fashion here. I think my term ends in June, but this is sort of the last formal act. So it's been a it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the town and work with Sue and Jim and their folks and Tom as well. It's been really, they've made difficult conversations and work very easy. So thank them. Thank you and appreciate the opportunity.
And we appreciate everything you've done. So so thank you, Robert.
I just, Joe, I'd like to point out real quick, I believe a lot of those term limits have a one-year interim and before you can restart again, just saying.
So in other words, Tom actually has the key to the ball and chain that's
Once you're in, you can, it's like Hotel California, Rob.
Okay, next item on our agenda.
You have to accept that financials.
You are right. So I am prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal 2021 financial statement and management letter as submitted.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Now we can move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Now we will move on to the fiscal year 23 department budget request. So we're moving from fiscal year 21, skipping over 22 and going to fiscal year 23 department budget request. And we start with Bear Cove Park. And I believe we have Claudia Eaton here.
She will be in momentarily, but I do see that our DPW colleagues are here. If you'd like to start with them first while she joins.
I am ready to do that. So we'll move to the fiscal year department budget request for the Public Works and Transfer Station.
Not to put Randy and Matt on the spot.
Yes, you are. You're putting him on the spot.
All right, I'll pull up that PowerPoint.
Hello? Hello? There we go. We are doing well. How are you?
Good. So this is the FY 23 budget presentation for the DPW. Next slide. We have six divisions, engineering, fleet maintenance, highway, sewer, transfer station, and tree and park. Next slide. These are benchmarks and metrics. We have about 140 miles of public roads, 100 miles of drain lines, 60 miles of sidewalks, 10,000 drainage structures, many, many public shade trees, 80 pieces of snow equipment, 3100 traffic street signs, transfer station, and 13 sewer stations. Next slide. Our key initiatives this year, well, basically was the October 30th storm, which was somewhat immense and did a lot of damage in town. And our response and recovery of it, we did bring in specialized equipment and contractors. It ended up costing us and still is costing the town of around $400,000. Some of our other key initiatives are reconstruction of the of the of the roads and the utility coordination, especially the gas company. The AMS for Stormwater Permit Compliance, which is ongoing as we speak and will go ongoing. DEP grants and applications, which we do every year. Public education about recycling and the regulation changes on recycling. One of our big goals is with the sewer and the Inflown Infiltration Program, which is ongoing. The MWRA has basically limited their their grant loan program, but we still are putting in $100,000 into that program. And we also have the grain grounds and maintenance facilities program, which we take care of all the schools, fields and all the selectmen's fields. And we take care of those and mow them and take care of them. And a transfer station fee analysis that we did. Next slide. So salaries and expenses, we have a 52 full-time staff in all those departments and three part-time staff. The salaries and expenses for DPW total to $4,337,721. 626-738 is for the snow removal. 387,000 is for the 1,000 is for the road maintenance and 284,000 is for the paving supplies. Transfer station total of the trash and recycling is 1,1789,003. And in sewer, it's 300, let's see, 3,703,041. Next slide. I'm asking for two additional requests. One is a part-time assistant to the town, town engineer. One is a part-time assistant to the town, town engineer, with all the projects that's going on in the town. Especially the reconstruction of paving, the three-A design, public safety, building. Traffic committee duties, have a WAF, while resiliency and pedestrian improvement and grants. There's a lot of pressure on him to do some of these things, and I feel that we're gonna need an assistant engineer to help him out in, in some of these projects. I'm also asking for a part-time office assistant, which would combine with the pre-existing water administrative assistant. This way, we could hire one full-time position, and it would support both the water superintendent and the engineer. Next slide.
I believe that's the end of your.
That's good. So I will answer any questions. My budget is pretty much steady throughout, there's a couple of increases. One is a two thousand increase on R and M buildings. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong budget there.
Just to note, the two budgets that Randy and Matt are talking about tonight are DPW slash highway and the transfer station. He will come back next week to discuss the sewer budget after the sewer commissions had a chance to, to vote those numbers.
Right. So one of the increases that I, I'm looking at is for the R and M vehicles, which seems to be going up in, in costs. I'm just asking for fifteen hundred dollars to go, most of my costs and additions and the, and decreases of my budget. Basically, I do the budget and try to, try to go through the, to be even with the, around the three-year average. I do a three, a four, and a five-year average, and then I take the actual costs and I make a decision on what we should be spending. Vehicles, the, to come up with more of an average cost would be an increase of fifteen hundred dollars. R and M grounds has gone down a little bit. And I'm taking six, six thousand dollars off of that. Again, R and M building, the building is eleven years old, we are doing more and more maintenance to it. I'm adding four thousand dollars to that, to come up to the three-year average again. And then incremental changes throughout the, the budget, basically to get to the three-year average. Snow, I haven't changed, actually a small, small change, and, and, and that would be a two hundred dollar increase in the miscellaneous expenses, and that basically covers actually what it says in our weather services and whatnot that we, that we pay subscription for. And the one other additional would be in drainage services, and this is a fifteen to hundred dollar increase due to the cost increasing in, in the stormwater, MS four stormwater program. And that will be increasing yearly to cover the requirements put forth through the EPA MS four program. And that's about it, so, do you have any questions?
So Randy, thank you, thank you for a thorough presentation. You have really done the town proud, you mentioned at the beginning about the work involved with the October storm. And our surrounding towns were envious of the work that you did, you really, you did good for the residents, so thank you. Part of that work, I know, was done in conjunction with Hingham Light, and you mentioned the, the increased costs associated with bringing in, you know, outside equipment to assist, are any of those costs being shared with Hingham Light?
No. We have, we have a contractor on state contract. We had many tree crews, we had, we had on average, three tree crews, three to four tree crews in for almost three weeks. Along with some specialized equipment that came in and probably removed a hundred and thirty trees.
Yep.
In two days. But no, I, to my knowledge, we didn't share any of these costs.
Tom, I just.
Did use some of the, the services that are supplied from our tree service.
Tom, if, if you can just, you know, review it and let us know if there's, if there are any interdepartmental transfers that need to be looked at. Yes, that'd be great. Randy, we are seeing, all of us are seeing fuel costs going up, gas prices are going up. How is that affecting your budget?
Actually, my fuel usage is the same. The, the cost is of course increasing. Either I use the fuel or not and do the services, so I, I, yes, it is increasing the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think that what we're seeing needs to have, needs to be reflected in your budget so that you can fuel your vehicles.
Yes.
You mentioned, your slideshow has a, I thought a salary figure of, in the four millions, and when I looked behind it, I thought salaries were, were only, were about two-point-four million. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand.
I, I think that was the total figure, not the salary.
Oh, salaries and expenses, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And to what extent does your budget reflect sort of the growing needs of the town to address net-zero green policies for sustainability, actions that your department can, can take to, to support those efforts?
So, right at this point, we're looking at our vehicles, especially the administrative vehicles. And through the capital outlay, I am putting in for a hybrid administrative vehicle. We do not need to, at this point, to go out and look at electric vehicles, but we will be looking at that in the future.
Okay. I know that you've been contacted about doing composting for the town. You know, any other efforts? I, I just want to make sure that your budget reflects what needs to be done so that, so that we can move forward to a a net-zero policy.
Yeah, so that would be more in the transfer station budget.
Yeah.
Not the highway budget, and then in the DPW budget, but yes, that is in the, the transfer station budget.
And just one more comment, this is not a question, because your report mentioned the selectmen's fields. There are some in town who think that those are the fields that selectmen go out and play on. That's not what the selectmen's fields are, those are the fields that are subject to the jurisdiction of the, of the select board. Just to clarify that, we don't have our own little, little fields to play on. So with that, I will turn it over to Liz for any questions.
Thank you, Randy, for the presentation and putting this all together. Related to, to the selectmen fields, how is the field maintenance going? Is it covered in this piece of the budget?
It's, it's going well. The, the, the one hiccup that we've had was the, the equipment and the replacement of the equipment. And actually, we're, we're still waiting for a mower that was due in July. And also, the on the labor side, we're missing four people, well, actually, more like six people in the total DPW. But four of those are in the tree and park, which actually take care of those fields. So, yes, at times, we've been slow in getting to those fields. But hopefully, we can correct those problems and move forward.
Definitely, thank you, I know it's, it's been hard to get the, the equipment. One question about the snow budget. So, so I know you mentioned that, that high cost of the October storm, are we planning for other storms like that? Or does that come out of the snow budget, even if it's not technically snow?
That will come out of snow, depending the type of storm it is.
Okay.
If it's a windstorm, that would have to come out of my budget normally, but if it's an ice storm, or, and if we use any type of ice fighting equipment, snow fighting equipment, then that would come out of snow.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, great, thank you, Randy, a couple of questions, Randy, you said the October storm was running about four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Pretty high, okay, you mentioned M and R, can you remind me what M and R stands for again? Maintenance and. R and M, that's it, yeah. R and M is.
Something in my, maintenance.
Repair and match, repair and, repair and maintenance, okay, repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance, yes.
Randy, you're getting rusty.
Yes.
Sorry, so I didn't mean to.
I just know where it goes.
And the MS four, that's all drained, that's all related to drainage upgrades, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and those, but those required by the state, I'm trying to think of my planning board days.
That is required through the EPA Environmental Protection Agency, US. And what the mass DEP is the the agency that enforces it.
But when, those are all unfunded mandates, right, we're not getting any reimbursement for those.
No, no reimbursements, they are unfunded.
Okay. And lastly, Tom, the new, I guess the new old positions Randy, Randy mentioned. Is it, is it your vision that those positions would help out CPC? Again, I know in the past, we used we utilize the assistant position to give administrative support to CPC. CPC's, you know, obviously been in need of an administrative assistant there, is that what you're thinking down the road?
Yeah, that and a bunch of other stuff, if you remember when we revamped, revamped the, the engineering department a couple of years back. We, we broke apart a lot of the responsibilities, and you're right, that was one of them. I think that, I think it's a logical place for that work to be done out of, there's so much of it, of it runs through Randy's office. So it just makes sense, but I, you know, to, to be determined for sure, Bill, but I think that's a very logical home for it. And the justification, frankly, for the, for that position.
Okay, great. Well, Randy, appreciate all you do, you too, Matt, thank you so much for all you guys are doing, and great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just follow up with a, just a very brief question, so looking at the budget. It looks as if your vehicle fuel is up just about forty percent from last year. And so I'm assuming that that is reflecting, at least in part, that the fuel increase that I was mentioning.
It is, it is the fuel increase, because the, the figure that I budgeted for is the same.
Yep. And I noticed your paving supplies are actually flat from last year. At two hundred and eighty-four thousand. And is that realistic, giving, given sort of the general cost increases that we're seeing in the supply chain issues?
At this point, yes, next year will tell us a little bit more. But at this point, I had figured, I don't see a I don't foresee any large increases this year.
Great. Okay, do any members of the public have questions on these budgets? Seeing none? Thank you for the report, Randy.
Do you want me to do the transfer station?
Now we can move to transfer, yes.
Transfer station is, again, I was talking about, it's, it's pretty much the same. Any increases in the, in the, in the wages are basically contractual. Again, R and M buildings is up two thousand dollars, that's because the age of the building and the expenses that we have to spend in order to keep the building up to par. There aren't. I did up the bailing wire, and that, the reason for that is, is that we have installed a second baler. And that is for the commodity end of things, we will pick and choose what we will bail according to what the cost of the commodity is, and we will sell that, trying to absorb some of this budget crunch. And that should be going into service within the next month or so. It has been installed, it just has to be started up. Then the other large increase is the, is the well, there's two large increases, one is, one is the trash budget, and that's contractual.
Right.
With the, that's contractual, our, our trash has not gone up as tonnage-wise, but it is. We're going from, on, on an average of ninety-three, ninety-three and change per ton. When it was eighty-five, when it was like ninety, eighty-seven. Eighty-seven, eighty-eight dollars per ton. So there is a contractual increase there. The other, the other large increase is the site monitoring of the landfill itself. And that's ten thousand dollars, and that is because we had to change vendors. The old vendors does not do that anymore, the old engineering company. And this, the increases are basically due to the testing and the cost of the testing that is required by the DP, DEP on a quarterly basis. And that's ten thousand dollars, and probably will go up incrementally year by year. Other than that, everything else, any, any of the increases is basically due to like vehicle fuel and things like that.
Yeah, because I, I see the vehicle fuel, just as in the other budgets, up about forty percent. And I, I noticed that your recycling costs are flat.
They are flat, that's due to one thing is the recycling market is coming back a little bit.
Oh, it is, okay, I, I didn't.
It is, and, and we're trying, that's why we, we, we did purchase the other baler, and that I do have to, I will mention that it was done with the RDP funds, the recycling dividend program, which is a grant program through the DEP. It cost right around, well, I don't have the final cost, but it's between twenty thousand and thirty thousand dollars. And we get about fifteen thousand dollars a year, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for this grant program, which I have have kept it for this, for this reason. We also buy the recycling bins and the compost bins, that we do have a compost bin program. And all's, the residents have, if they would like to have a compost program for themselves, as they need to do, and they want one of these bins, alls they need to do is contact the DPW. And we give it, we, we, we can sell them the compost bins for twenty-five dollars, which is about half the cost of, of one of these bins, and then that is also through a grant program.
And then what about the, the pickup of those bins, is that just done with private contractors?
No, the bins are, basically, they go outside in your yard. And you fill them with, with yard waste and food scraps, and it automatically composts. And the, the compost will drop out the bottom, and you get to utilize that in your garden or in your yard. And you get to utilize that in your garden or in your yard.
And for those living in apartments?
Um, there is a well, someone.
I thought there were companies that went around and picked it up.
But there is, there is a program and it's not through the town, but there are, there are vendors that will
Right.
Basically pick them up. They'll give you uh, any kind of, any size container, but usually it's it's a five gallon bucket with a cover. Um, it's a lockable cover and you'll fill those up for the week and they will come and exchange it. And then you pay us a fee for that. But that is not through the town.
Right, right. Okay, Liz, any questions?
Um, no questions, but thank you, Randy, for all that you're doing from the sustainability perspective, um, as well as the the transfer fee analysis. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Ramsey?
No questions, but uh, as a comment, Randy, I, you know, I'm the liaison to DPW, so uh, over the years, I've I've developed a good relationship with Steve Messenger and you know, I'm always up there talking to him and checking in with him and gonna tell you, I think your staff at the transportation does a fantastic job, really do. You think about the the volume of um, recycling they deal with and how they do it, they just really do a fantastic job up there. So thanks for what they do.
We've come a long way.
Thank you, Randy. Any member of the public have comments for Randy on the transfer station budget? Seeing none, we can, uh, good thanks to Randy and move on. Next item. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to Bear Cove Park. I see Claudia is here. You will, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, thanks for having us. I'm here also with Ray O'Neil, our treasurer.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
So if you can walk us through your uh, budget presentation.
Sure, Michelle, would you, thank you. Right. Um, as you, you might be aware, Bear Cove Park has been a great meeting spot during the COVID pandemic. Um, and we've seen a lot of great increase in activity. Um, I'll begin with our missions and services. Bear Cove Park is a four hundred eighty-four acre wildlife sanctuary and public recreation area along the banks of Lehman Back River. It's an exceptional area of riverine shoreline. We received this land from the government in nineteen seventy-one. It's served as the ammunition's depot for World War One, World War Two, and the Korean War. There are two historic buildings on the property, the Dock House Museum. And now, and you may not be familiar, Building one fifty-one has been brought to light um, more this year, which is a burial vault. Uh, the committee is dedicated to conserving the tranquility of the estuary, wetlands, fields, woods, animal and plant life, paved roadways, and woodland trails for wildlife, public education, and enjoyment. Our part-time Bear Cove Park Ranger keeps the park clean, maintains trails, mows the fields and and plows the paved roads surfaces in the winter. He also serves as the the face of Bear Cove Park to many folks who use the park. Hingham High Rec, um, School, Hingham High School's rowing program uses the Back River, which runs and is the predominant waterfront area to Bear Cove for practice and for regattas. Cross-country programs and Hingham Recreation have used the park trails as well as the the roadways. Charities and small businesses have also used the park for passive recreational use. Bear Cove Park's sole fundraiser is now the Bean Town Loop Marathon. It happens in September and twenty twenty-one. Um, and and generally we receive about six thousand dollars as a donation out of the Bean Town Loop Marathon. This year, however, since it was kind of because it's post-COVID, um, we receive much less. Um, fifty thousand dollars was allocated um, by the apartment complex, the Cove for Park Use. And we, as a committee, have reserved that for some development if, um, in the future. Next slide, please. Our key initiatives, maintain the trails and the kiosks uh, used for marking critical areas. Um, and there you see the the names of the areas that we are focused on. Plans for potential waterfront park structure to support recreational use such as a pavilion, a boathouse, and a bathroom. Other initiatives include investigating access to potable water at the waterfront at the request of the rowing team and several of our, um, many of our users of the park. Um, the Dock House Museum Maintenance and Electrification, um, which serves as as the sole source of collections for war artifacts. We'd like to create a trail and signage for Building one fifty-one Historic Vault that we have worked on and will continue to work on. Pollinator gardens, to date, there are two gardens um, within the park. Both of these are done through donations and through, um, in in the case of twenty twenty-one, um, a our Girl Scout Silver Award winner. Uh, outdoor educational programs through the partnerships with local teachers and Hingham Recreation. We've started, we've made inroads in twenty twenty-one on that and will continue to do so. For-profit and not-for-profit fitness, running, yoga, Pilates, Tai Chi, all passive recreation and meditation classes uh, from citizens proposals initiated by citizens. Bear Cove Park Permit Application Process and that for you, for the, those of you who might have forgotten, we have a permit process for dog, dog walkers who'd like to walk their dogs off leash on odd days of the month. And that's covered in the last and the next one. And finally, the repair of Building eighty, which is the other major building in the park, which is in badly in need of roof and a holes in the walls repairs. Next slide, please.
Claudia, can I ask, add one more thing? A lot of students have utilized the park as it means to meet their community service requirements as well.
Thanks, Ray. So we'd just like to emphasize that the waterfront, Bear Cove Waterfront has had active use, um, particularly since uh, since COVID nineteen hit Hingham. Uh, we have had a number of folks walking through the park, having their meetings in the park, meeting their families in the park. Um, we also have the the rowing mati- rowing club through the Hingham High School are there on a daily basis and practicing in in the river, in the river. Next slide, please. So as far as our expenses, the salaries are include a one-part-tiring ranger, Scott McMillan. Um, we are asking for twenty-four thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars, which is a slight increase in hours worked for Scott from moving from eighteen and a half hours to twenty-three hours per week because of the increase in park usage. Our expenses remain the same as in prior years, nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Um, and those, the line items are there in front of you. They include two thousand dollars for the dog expenses, which are basically bags. The grounds work is one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Other equipment, seven thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Telephone is an alarm system for hundred and eighty dollars. Vehicle fuel remains consistent at one thousand twenty dollars. Next slide, please. Or should we just go over the main? Yeah, thank you. So basically, the the major items are two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for equipment, repair and maintenance, and two thousand dollars for dog park expenses. Any questions?
Claudia, thank you. Your department delivers a lot. Your your group delivers a lot for uh, for the money that that we see here. If I can ask, have there been uh, any security issues at the park that need to be addressed by the town?
To date, no, there have not been any.
Which is, which is great. And, you know, for example, I know that motorized vehicles are not allowed, fires are prohibited. Are people respectful of those rules and?
They are, they are. And and we've we've have a good relationship with the police department. And when, in the, in the height of the summer COVID, everybody walking, we had um, police patrolling on bicycles in the area. And that was very helpful.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you.
Bill?
A couple of questions, Claudia and Ray. Great job as always. Uh, thank you for, thank you for doing it, uh, doing this. Uh, Claudia, so building, where is Building one five-one?
Well, if you're facing um, the the Cove, the apartment uh, from while you're in Bear Cove Park, looking at the Cove. So if you walk over to the left about a hundred yards, it's hidden in the wood, it's hidden down in some vines and in in areas down below there.
Was, so is that, you said it's burial vault, is, so was that, is that related to the old Alms House?
It is, we believe so, yes. We have some historians who've come before our committee and have explained that to us.
So, so Alec, so Alec came and probably some of some other historians?
Uh, Julia Christian and Jim Clark.
Excellent, I didn't even know about that, excellent. Um, and I, you know, I was out at the park recently, Scott took me around and I'm I'm the liaison to the parks, I was looking at some stuff out there. It looks like the Building eighty roof has been patched up a little bit, which is great. So the leak, I think, has been fixed out there, uh, which is good. So with the things, the items stored in eighty won't be damaged, um, which was good to see, although it's, you know, it's not a not the best fix to it, but there is a fix out there, which was great to see that. And you mentioned a a Boy Scout camp. Is a Boy Scout camp out there? I didn't even know that.
There is. I am not as familiar as maybe Ray, I don't know, are you familiar more with?
It's pretty close to Building eighty. It's kind of tucked away, it's a couple of the, um, I'm gonna call them the old uh, Quonset Huts is what they really have.
Okay. Great. Well, I will tell you, 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 the committee and particularly Scott, you do a wonderful job with the history. Um, it's great to see it and it's great to see so many people out there walking around. When I was out there last Friday, sorry, a ton of people walking and enjoying the park, so uh, thanks for all you do. And Scott's just, Scott is just wonderful at what he does too, so.
Any member of the public have questions on this? Seeing none, Claudia and Ray, thank you for your presentation and thank you for your efforts. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, we now move on to the town hall budget. I believe we have Jeff Peasy and Horatio Hemmings.
Yes, and Joe, I will start this one off.
Okay, great.
All right, so the town hall budget, um, as most of you know, Jeff Peasy, the town hall facilities manager, has a team of three full-time staff, including Ray and Chris and two part-time staff, Doreen and Herb, who maintain this entire building, which is more like a campus here. It's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet and it was last renovated in nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight. It used to be a school. And maybe some folks on the call, um, spent some time in. It contains most of our town departments, our police station, the senior center, the recreation department and some of their facilities, our central school administration offices, and the regional nine-one-one dispatcher that, uh, dispatch center that came up earlier in the call that serves Hingham Hall, Norwell, and Cohasset. Um, this maintenance team also supports other municipal facilities in town, specifically Three Away Cushing Street, which is the former HMLP plant, G Air Hall, um, H George, Short Street, which is the former DPW Tree and Park Barn, three thirty-five Lincoln Street, our newest acquisition, which is the site potentially of a new public safety facility. Um, they also support public meetings and special events here and around town, including town meeting, um, and provide support to other public facilities on an as-needed basis. The FY twenty-three budget request for the town hall maintenance team is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for salaries and about four hundred and twenty-six thousand four seventy-six for expenses. You will notice in the budget that actually this year, the overall FY twenty-three town hall budget request is lower than FY twenty-two, and that's primarily because we have changed the way that we are budgeting for some of the utilities, so um, particularly in the electricity line. In the past, we've been somewhat inconsistent in how we've applied different payments and reimbursements from Shrek, from the nine-one-one dispatch center to the electricity line. So going forward, um, we worked with Sue Nickerson to figure out on average about how many kilowatt-hours per year Shrek uses, and it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we've subtracted that from the amount that we are budgeting for town hall and they will be, um, they will be paying that directly. So that's why you see the decrease in that line in particular. Um, and then we've also tried to get a little bit closer in terms of natural gas to the actual terms used in the past and have adjusted that budget slightly. Um, so those two changes result in um, a fairly large decrease. And we have bumped up a few line items, specifically repair and maintenance to the HVAC system. Jeff and Ray can talk about that in more detail, but we are seeing some service calls go up there. Um, we have preventative maintenance contracts in that line, but we also have a number of service calls related to the heat pumps that are just, you know, each year is yet another year older. We have about seventy total in the building. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've replaced about twenty-nine or thirty percent to date. Um, but they, a lot, they spend a lot of their time working on the HVAC systems. And Jeff or Ray, do you want to add anything at this point?
Uh, no, just to reiterate that, um, going forward, that a lot of your units are still on R twenty-two. And as we're going forward, we're trying to replace them as they're um, breaking down and replacing them with four-ten, which is more efficient, more um, better for the ozone layer as far as EPA certified. And 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 just making sure that the building is working at its uh, optimum efficiency. As far as HVAC is concerned, um, obviously with having systems that are fairly older, it requires that, you know, certain things where we come to service, if I cannot fix it in-house, we have to rely or prefer to come in here. And that's really why we feel like we had to extend the uh, the budget for the HVAC part of the aspect. But, you know, as things go on, you know, this, this is a fairly older building. Um, and there's a lot of units in here that are still on R twenty-two and still, you know, require a lot of service that needs to be done. But, you know, uh, what we're asking for when we go to capital is to continue to just replace them as needed and 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 continue to just try to stay above the curve.
Ray, about how many units are we replacing a year?
We have.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
All right, so we have seventy heat pumps total. We've replaced about thirty percent. So the rule of thumb is, um, if we reached, if it, if the cost of repair is about, you know, two-thirds, you know, of a, you know, a repair as opposed to replacing, we replace them. So I would say we're replacing about three or four a year.
Okay.
And then something that Ray said just sparked in in terms of energy efficiency, and this was really spearheaded by Art Robert, but we have applied for a Green Communities Competitive Grant to change, to convert all of the lighting in town hall to LEDs. So hopefully we are successful in getting that grant, and then I would expect to see a change in that electricity line going forward um, when that project is complete.
Obviously, with putting in the four-ten units too, you know, everything's gonna just run a lot better. You know, um, you're talking about, if if I'm wrong, I forget if, but I think Jeff said, most of these units were put in in, um, when was it? Ninety-seven, so, you know, it's 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 definitely do, you know, and um, you know, we we have been pretty good of maintaining it and getting the best out of these older units. But to be honest with you, you know, the turnover is is only gonna increase as things go on.
And it sounds like it's better for the environment to the extent we can accelerate the replacement, replacement.
Well, to to be honest with you, Joe, a a a bottle of R twenty-two, which what the units take right now is about a thousand dollars to buy. And for the four-ten units that we're putting in, it's about four hundred bucks for a bottle of refrigerant. So what they're trying to do is go away from using R twenty-two and stay with four-ten because it's a lot better um, for the ozone layer and EPA is asking that everybody move forward, um, with going with four-ten.
What's the use useful life of the units once we replace them?
Lifetime expectancy on a heat pump is anywhere between twenty and twenty-five years. But I, you know, some of the HVAC guys have told me that they've got ones that are running at thirty years. So I mean, we're getting there now, cuz I mean, they were stamped, you know, basically installed in ninety-seven. But I gotta tell you, some of these are still running. But I gotta tell you, some of these are still running fairly well. You know, we keep up with the maintenance on, they're still going.
Yep. Are the, is the Shrek, um, are the Shrek utilities separately metered? Michelle, do you know?
Um.
They have a separate electrical meter down in the boiler room. Then I don't know how the, about gas. I'm not sure about that.
I don't. I don't think the gases, that the electricity is, and Sue will do periodic readings, um, and charge them for reimbursements of that.
Okay. Yep. Cause I do see the, um, if you look at the budgets, the, the amounts budgeted for electricity were bouncing all over the place. You know, one year it's a hundred and fifty four thousand, the next year it's seventy four thousand, then it jumps up to a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, so I understand that you're, you're correcting the allocation of, um, of, of funds there so that we'll have a more consistent forecast as we go forward.
Yes, the true cost has been relatively stable, but we've applied different payments from Shrek. Sometimes electrical reimbursement, sometimes part of their rent checked to the town to that line in the past, and we're just trying to be consistent about going forward. We will charge them, you know, their average electrical use and, and set it that way so that we should be, um, you should see more consistent budget numbers going forward.
Great. Bill, any questions?
No questions. Uh, Ray, Jeff, thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Can I just add one?
Oh, please, go ahead.
I, I just wonder, everyone else, the, the, the whole building is not just, you know, heated and cooled by the heat pumps. We also have, you know, five rooftop units, um, that handle some heating and cooling, like the entire first floor of the police station is done by rooftop units. And the rec center is done by rooftop units. And Shrek, which is kind of separate, but that also rooftop. So the water source heat pumps mostly do town hall and, you know, school department and only the, uh, second floor of the, uh, police station. And we've done a lot of the big ticket items, like we replaced the cooling tower. That's a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. We've done that, uh, all the rooftops have been replaced. All those have been done in the last five to ten years. So we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Just, just following up on that before I ask, ask Liz for questions. How are we in terms of circulation, ventilation, which is, has been a focus during these COVID years? Uh, to make sure that, that, you know, those who are in town hall, um, are as best protected as possible.
While we've done, uh, so we just repeat that again. Can you just repeat that again?
What I'm, what I'm asking is, um, how, how is the building set up for circulation and ventilation, uh, so that when folks are there, it's, it's relatively safe for them?
Yeah. So we bring in, um, we have an open plenum system. So we bring in, I think whatever the requirement, I think it's fifteen or twenty percent fresh air by code you have to bring in. Um, so we bring, we, we actually pull the, um, air in, like I said, we have an open plan, which means the cold, the fresh air is just dumped above the drop ceiling and it's gravity fed. So like whatever, you know, when you got, where you guys meet right in the selectmen's office, there are vents right there that, um, you know, the cold air will be dumping right in. And those fans are activated, uh, by our main control panel. So they're basically running basically the whole, you know, day at the town hall. They only shut off overnight. Unless you guys are there late and you go over to the thermostat and if you hit override, and if you're having a meeting, you will then dump, it'll pull fresh air in again. So we, we're definitely, we pull in with fresh air, uh, you know, throughout the whole building everywhere.
Yep. Um, yeah, I know Horatio gave me a lecture on that once because I was trying to do something. It was gonna disrupt the, uh, the circulation.
No.
I was correct.
It's, it's like, it's, everything's working too. I mean, because of COVID, I went back through and made sure everything was working the way that, you know, that originally was designed. And we had to make a couple of adjustments as far as controls. But, um, it, that everything's working good. Knock on wood.
And, and, and to also add to that too, Joe, we're on a PM system too. So no matter what preferred comes in here, it goes through all these filters and change. Everything is, is kept, um, on a, on a, on a, uh, chart by Jeff so that, you know, we, we hold everybody accountable as far as what that's concerned. And if we see filters that also need to be changed, we stay on top of it ourselves too.
Great. Liz, your turn. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay. No, no, no further questions, but thank you for, for doing so much to keep up with the maintenance. That's certainly a critical piece here so that we're not replacing everything. Um, and they, just to go back to the heat pumps and some of the other equipment, um, I don't see anything included for FY twenty three. So does that mean you don't expect to replace those or?
That might be capital.
Or it will come from capital. Okay.
Capital. Probably for heat pumps.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any member of the public have questions on the town hall budget? Seeing none, Jeff Horatio, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you both.
Thank you.
Moving on to town clerk and elections, I believe we have Carol Falvey here. Good to see you, Carol. And you're muted. You're still muted. Carol.
Thank you for having me. Uh, this is my first budget. It's been quite a process. Um, I've learned a lot uh, going through this. So we can start, Michelle, if you don't mind, first slide.
Yep, here we go.
And the next one. Thank you. So mission and services, I'm gonna take these a little out of order and, and more in the order as I've been learning the job. Um, we process vital records, which include about thirty birth, marriage and death certificates per week. Uh, we post and maintain meeting agendas for over forty committees and boards on a regular basis in compliance with the open meeting law. Uh, I serve as the Public Record Access Officer. I field inquiries for public records and ensure responses go out in a timely manner. We compile and send out the annual warrant for town meeting and certify votes to the Attorney General, the Department of Revenue and the Secretary of the Commonwealth. We oversee licensing, uh, which includes business certificates and the various dog licenses, which takes a lot of woman power in my office because of the various steps to collect the rabies vaccination information, fees, insurance for off leash pro, uh, the off-leash program at Bear Cove. I'm amazed at how much time is spent on dogs. Hangum loves its dogs and we have a lot of them. Um, we're also the depository of historical information and we host access to those documents. Here is, I haven't even yet experienced is the collection and compilation of the annual street listing, which is, is coming in January, and of course, the administration of state and local elections, and we will have three fiscal year twenty three. Next slide, please. Um, this just shows, I, I was interested in this because it shows the, the metrics of the registered voters in the green line in the voter turnout in the blue. And of course, you know, June twenty twenty with COVID, we have a low local response, but we really picked up the pace in May twenty one, um, May twenty twenty one, especially if you look at it compared to April two thousand nineteen. So we had quite a big increase in our little local election this past year. Uh, next slide, please. So our key initiatives, of course, we have three, um, elections coming up of the state, state pri, the September state primary election, the November state election, and then of course, the April town election in twenty twenty three. We're still waiting for the legislature to give us a state primary date. We checked yesterday again to see when, when that will be and the legislature, one of the many things they haven't decided on yet. So we're waiting on that. You, you may have heard that early voting, no, no excuse voting expires tomorrow, and that also has not yet been extended. So we're um, kind of following that development. Um, but other initiatives, obviously still, you know, we do expect early voting to continue. So managing that, um, I have a whole new staff in, in the office. So we are being trained and, and managing the new, um, the new office people as well as some additional new election workers. We hope to expand our communication streams to use a little bit more social media going forward and, and the next year. And we have decided as a, as a office that we are going to send out birth certificates as we process them to new parents. We just feel like that's a nice service. Most people will at call and ask for it, and rather than have them go through that process, we're just automatically sending them out. New parents have enough on their hands without having to worry about that extra step. So, um, so those are some of the things that we're, we're focused on. Uh, next slide, please. So most of the clerk's office is comprised of salaries, which we have three full-time personnel. And then we have expenses, which is indicated in the slide. Printing services and postage comprise most of it. And next slide, and this is the staff and expenses for elections. Again, salaries, um, I, I receive a small stipend uh, for the election work in the board of registrars also receive a small stipend, but most of the, the salaries will go to the election workers and this will be for three elections, um, that we're projecting. And then the expenses, of course, uh, once again, three elections, postage, computer service agreements and printing service. And, and the computer service agreements are for, um, our, our pole pads and tabulators, which we own. And that, so that's what those expenses relate to. And next slide, I think that's it.
I think that's it. I, I am, Miss, there should be one extra slide. Carol, do you want to just speak to your additional requests? I know it's small, but.
It is, we have a, a small additional request in the elections budget because of the seventh precinct that, that we will be having, um, in the new, in twenty twenty two. Um, we have requested an additional pole pad in a, there is a maintenance or a service contract on that. And the pole pad is fifteen hundred and seventy five dollars and the three hundred, it's a three hundred dollar maintenance fee that goes along with that request. So, um, that's it. Do you have any questions?
So Carol, you, uh, got a lot on your plate and, uh,
We do.
And you, and you have a new plate. So it's just.
A new plate.
Yeah. So it's really, um, an exceptional job that you're doing.
Thank you.
So I, I believe that the state law applying to basically, um, anyone can mail in a ballot, that, that law is sunsetting. And it may, and it may, right. And it may or may not be reenacted. I, I don't know, but what does your budget assume about mail-in ballots?
Our budget assumes that there will be a mailing component. My conversation with our state rep is that we have two versions with the Senate and the, and the House. And there, they need to come to some agreement and they have not got there yet, but I think in principle, they all agree on the benefits of early voting and the accessibility and allowing people to vote that way. Uh, so I think it's just a matter, I, I actually heard, um, Bill Blavin today, he was being interviewed on a radio, uh, program, uh, was out at lunch and he's very frustrated with the fact that they haven't at least extended the current program through June thirtieth. So I suspect we will hear something. But right now it's very much up in the air.
But for our purposes, you've assumed that's.
I have assumed that, correct.
Great, thank you. Bill, any questions?
No questions. Carol, off to a great start.
Thank you.
Liz Klein.
Yes, Carol, thank you. I know it's been a really busy start.
It has, it has. It's been, it's, it's been great. It's been really, it's been interesting. People have been so helpful and Eileen has been just a treasure in terms of helping to mentor me and, um, she's been so supportive. It's been, the town is lucky to have her.
Yes, that's not surprising, but I'm glad to hear it. Excellent. Um, one thing that came up, um, from a resident was about a secure, the secure mailboxes outside. Is that included in the budget?
So that is not included in the budget because that is something actually we're in discussions with to fund in the current year.
Okay.
And, and we're actually, um, been in discussions with Michelle, with the water company and, and HMLP to, we're maybe gonna redo all of the, the drop boxes that we have. So that's a current, that same citizen raised it with me as well. It was like my first week at work and he, he told me that we need better drop boxes and more secure ones. And I, I did not disagree with him. So so that is something that we are in the process of doing.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any member of the public have questions for Carol Falvey? Seeing none. We thank you for the town clerk and elections presentation, Carol.
Thank you.
Great job. Really, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay for the next item.
Yes, because the next item on our agenda is a discussion and potential vote, potential vote regarding a petition for a special act to establish a voting precinct at Linden Ponds in the town of Hangum.
Correct. So.
Please.
So, so when we, we, we've talked about reprecincting in, in Hangum, and as you all know, we will be adding a seventh precinct. So in terms of, um, following the process, um, I'm gonna step back a little bit. When Linden Ponds first was created, they voted as part of precinct six, but originally that's the precinct they were in. And from what I understand, it really, it was very difficult for them. They had buses coming to the polling site and you know, many people had, had various, um, accoutrements to help them with either walkers or wheelchairs. And so they petitioned the town sometime perhaps in two thousand and seven to have their own, um, voting area at Linden Ponds. So we petitioned the mass, um, that we submitted special legislation to create that voting area, which was referred to as precinct six A. Subsequently, in two thousand and ten, when the census was, was done and we, we, we precincted then, they were transferred to precinct five, and we went through that same process to have their new voting area, um, be created. And that was done in two thousand and twelve. So here we are now in, in two thousand and twenty one, we have once again gone through new census, reprecincting, and we are applying once again to create, because they will now be in precinct seven, to have their own voting, um, space. I think I have maybe confused people when I refer to it as a voting sub precinct. It's really, they are a, an area within precinct seven where they will have their own voting area. Um, the process is to petition, um, the governor with, and then the special act as we have done in the past. I, I actually went back and double-checked because I know Liz asked me this question when we were talking about reprecincting. And I, I spoke to the elections, um, division. And that is the process. It will not affect our map at all, just as if you look at our current map that is on the town's website, there is no precinct five A carved out. It's just precinct five. So and, and finally, we still, it's considered as a language in the, in this, in the special act says, we are still precinct seven, shall be one precinct, the congressional, senatorial and counselor districts, but will have two polling places. One will be at Linden Ponds and one will be designated by the select board, which will be the middle school. So I, I think, and then there are separate voter lists for those, um, precincts as well. So that is the process. Um, the, when I was talking to Will Rosenberg, he shared with me that Pevy has a similar precinct setup for the Brooksby Village, which I, I know people have heard of. And he also shared with me that Newbury Port has a sub precinct P, which is for Plum Island, so that the people that live on Plum Island can vote right there on their island without having to, um, go someplace else. So anyway, that is the background behind this special act.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Carol, for doing all of the research and, and the due diligence on this. I, I think it's, um, it's important for us to preserve that, um, polling place for, for the residents of Linden Pond.
I agree. It's really for, it's really for their ease of, 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 of voting in, in getting as many people that are able to, to vote there. And it's really for their benefit and for the town's benefit to have more people participate.
Right.
Bill, any questions?
I guess we have to do this every year.
No, we would do it. We would only do it if, if Linden Ponds was moving to a different precinct. So maybe every ten years.
Every ten years. Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps, in worst case.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, am I correct that this is still, this is precinct seven?
Precinct seven.
Yes, okay. Any member of the public have questions for Carol on this? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll do it. I would make a motion to file a petition with the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to request a filing of a special law entitled an act establishing a voting Of a special law entitled an act establishing a voting precinct in the town of Hingham and the form attached here too.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. It is approved and we move on to the next Carol Falvey special. Discussion and potential vote regarding petition for a special act to allow. But not require the town of Hingham to postpone its twenty twenty-two municipal election.
Correct. So um I think the background on this is since COVID is still with us and life is a little unpredictable. That um people are, would like the opportunity to have a, have town meeting be outside, which may require. That to be postponed for some period of time. And my understanding is that we already have the authority to to do that. But we do um would like to follow our tradition of having the town election be on the Saturday following town meeting. Because we don't want, we want to have town meeting with the people who have gone through this whole budget process and have have been voted into. Into position. And so if we were forced to have the election before the town meeting, it would just the continuity of life as we know it in Hingham. Totally be disrupted. So this just allows um ta- the town's elected officials that are up for reelection. To to finish out the process that they've had and and give the new, the select board. The the ability to perhaps postpone it, no, not no later than June thirtieth, which would be the end of our fiscal year. Um, and uh, you know, I think it's a, it gives, it's a tool for you all. As we approach how we're gonna set up town meeting um to have the ability to do, I think, what's best.
Look out, is this uh essentially the same as what we've done in the last, last year during COVID?
It is, although I I think it, I I'm not sure, Michelle, I would have to defer to you since I wasn't here last year. Did you have different authority last year? I think you.
But I believe. I believe we started to go on our own like this and submitted it and then the state um extended. The authority to everyone to to shift the elections. I don't know if something like that will happen this year, but we figured, let's try to get.
I did, and I did have a conversation with Joan Maschino about it. She just felt like it was, this was a precaution to start the process. Um, like just in case the the state or the governor doesn't extend it. And so like, let's just jump on it and, because it would be helpful, honestly, to have a date set because people are already asking and. You know, people's terms for elections are coming up and and it would be really helpful to get a sense of when you were gonna have town meeting and when when the the local election will be scheduled.
Yes. Liz, you you lived through this last year, so uh I'll I'll open up to you first.
I did. It it's not easy running a campaign not knowing the finish line date, but. I do, um, I do think this is a a good idea to uh move forward with. It just gives us more flexibility, so. I don't really see any risk or downside to it. Um, obviously, we don't have to use it, but. It seems like with so much uncertainty, it it makes sense to move forward.
Yes, Bill, any, any questions?
It was, it's comments. I think it's good to have the flexibility to do this. Every time we take a step forward with this pandemic. We uh find ourselves in a situation where we're taking two steps back. We look where we are today opposed to where we were last summer. Um, with COVID spiking again with a new variant. So I think it's good to do it um related to this, um, but. Not directly on point, uh, many, many residents have said to me that they actually like the Saturday town meeting. Time and they like having it outside. So I'm not sure when, where, and how we would have a discussion about possibly. Um, looking at that in the future, but I think maybe we should maybe uh speak to our town moderator about maybe having a discussion about maybe moving it to a Saturday. Uh, down the road, but something to think about going forward.
Bill, I would agree with you. I've had people also say the same thing to me. And and a lot of people like the fact that it's during the daylight hours and not at night for driving. You know, some people don't like to drive at night. And it would go, town meeting would go so late and it would be eleven or twelve o'clock at night. So a lot, I've had a lot of positive feedback as well about the daytime.
A lot of elderly residents have said this, said that, Carol, to me, a lot of um uh parents have said it to me. I mean, I've got a. A lot of uh compliments on having it Saturday afternoon for a lot of different reasons. So it's a discussion that we have a community should have, I.
I agree, I agree.
Any member of the public have questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to file a petition with the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to request the filing of a special law entitled. An act to allow the town of Hingham to postpone its municipal election in the form attached here too.
We do a roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. It's approved and Carol, I think you are finally off the.
Thank you, cuz I have to go to the advisory committee in about a half an hour.
Okay.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank, thank you again.
Take care, have a good meeting, bye-bye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the request of Shipyard Ventures LLC. Doing business as Almanova, twenty-three Shipyard Drive for a change of ownership interest. And is Alan McKenna on the line here?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can see you too. So please, what are you requesting?
Thank you for having us. Um, so this one, there's actually two transactions involved here, but essentially. What we have are two existing members are going to be leaving the LLC. And those interests, which total about thirty-two percent, are going to be split among a group of five. In the group of five that'll be receiving these interests, two of the five are already approved interest holders in the LLC. And the other three are new members. And the three actually include myself, our new CEO who moved to Hingham about eighteen months ago, John Fuller. And a third person who's already involved with us on the Wahlburger side, but is now getting involved in the Almanove side. And that's an entity called Farcaster Pictures, um owned by a gentleman named Brian Lamachia. So. Even though the submission is eighty-one pages, that is what's happening in in a nutshell. Um, the only other wrinkle is that one of the folks that holds an interest now, the Elizabeth Vinsor Trust. It's held in what's called a class B interest and what the LLC is doing is getting rid of that class B and going to a single class. Of interest, thus the the different agreement for that transaction as opposed to the other transaction involving. The entity known as Average Larry Corp. So essentially, two people are leaving and three new people are coming in.
Got it. Uh, and as part of the process, I understand for the new people coming in, query forms. Uh, were submitted. Is that process complete or is or is that still ongoing?
I don't think it's complete yet. I, my understanding is the process is that those forms are submitted. They have all been submitted. Once um the select board acts on the application, it would then go to the ABCC where they'll complete that process. So I've not received any indication that that's been complete yet from the state, but my understanding is. Once we have a decision from the board, it would then go to the ABCC and they'll complete that process.
Got it. And I assume that nothing you're proposing is going to affect the fine menu that's available there.
Absolutely not, no.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill.
Uh, always good to see Alan. Uh, no questions, everything, I looked at the application, everything looks in order. Um, I'm I'm good with it.
Great. Any member of the public, comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of Shipyard Ventures LLC doing business as Almanove, twenty-three Shipyard Drive. Hang a mass for a change of ownership interest in accordance with the application for change of ownership. Interest filed with the town of Hingham on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
I heard a motion, is there a second?
Joe, I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
Then I will.
Second again.
I will second and we come to vote. Uh, roll call, Bill? I'm not hearing Bill.
Aye.
Uh, okay, Joe, aye, and uh Liz, you're abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain. The item is approved. Alan, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Alan.
But Liz, you cannot abstain from the next item, which is the Sustainable Budget Task Force update.
All right, Michelle, do you mind bringing up the slides?
Not at all. Can you guys see this?
Yes, thank you. All right, we can go to the next slide. So um this is our December update to the select board. Um, just as a reminder, the context and charge why the the task force was formed. Um, obviously, increased service demands, outpacing revenue growth, a need for longer-term sustainable financial planning. Um, trying to balance increased investment in services and capital with the impact on our taxpayers. Um, and last year, we know we we balanced the FY twenty-two budget with five million dollars in one-time funds. So at the point that we're at now is the FY twenty-three forecast so far suggests a seven million dollar deficit. So that it, that is the work in front of our our task force. Um, we were put together to assess future needs, explore revenue opportunities. Um, including a potential operational override to balance not only FY twenty-three, but the next five years, so through FY twenty-seven. So our progress since our last update on November sixteenth. Um, we have been meeting weekly. Um, we have continued to research potential non-tax revenue sources. Um, we, at the last update, we were, we did a slide on what those revenue sources were. Um, so you may remember things like um the transfer fee, uh stickers, um. The marijuana possibly, the one that has um kind of stood out as a a real potential for us in terms of. Um, we think it it might work well with our, with our community and bring in some a meaningful revenue. Is this real estate transfer fee, which we also discussed as a group last month. Um, so we are ex- uh continuing to explore that, looking at our benchmark towns. Um, looking at other towns in Massachusetts that have have done this, like Nantucket, as well as um towns that are are trying to get the legislation. So this would require um a a approval at town meeting, so potentially a a warrant article. Um, as well as state legislation. Other things we've been working on, um, and looking at other towns with uh that budget allocation by revenue percentage. So as an example, Brookline has been using this um for about a decade now. Where they take their total budget and they have agreed upon between municipal and the school. That school will get sixty percent, municipal will get forty percent. Um, and they, so they focus on the revenue of the town it with that, that percentage, that allocation. So when, when revenues are up, everybody has more when rev- when there's revenue loss experienced. You know, everybody has less and you know that going in. Um, so I think it does help with um planning and budgeting. Um, and there's certainly a focus on generating revenue and economic development. So that, we thought that was an interesting model, um, and we are, we are uh researching that, will continue to do that. Um, we've also been working on um over the last month analyzing the budget growth. Um, looking at the ten-year budget growth as well as population trends, school enrollment trends, income trends. Um, and other metrics, so we can get a good handle on um why is the budget growing at the rate that it is? Is it due to population, uh, is it due to school enrollment, kind of what's, what's going on in the town that's driving that? Um, as well as income trends to try to understand what is the taxpayer's capacity to pay um and what those, what that looks like. Um, we have discussed strategies around personnel costs. Obviously, we know um townwide. Personnel costs are our largest costs and are are growing um most significantly. So we have met with uh members of the personnel board. Um, as well as some of the labor attorneys to understand some of those, the strategies that are being used currently and and some ideas for strategies moving forward. Um, we have reviewed the preliminary FY twenty-three budget forecast, um as I mentioned, and that projected seven million dollar deficit. So that's, that's what we're um, that's what we've been doing. Um, and these, in these next couple of weeks. Um, as we finish out December, we will continue to look at uh the budget forecast and come up with different scenarios. Um, so that we can, we can put the, some recommendations together. Um, so some key takeaways. Um, if people, you know, uh kind of listen to one thing or or see one slide. Um, in terms of revenue, uh, we have researched many revenue sources. I feel like we have exhausted. Um, looking at revenue sources um within Hingham, within our benchmark towns, looking at what other towns are doing for local receipts. Uh, thinking creatively about um different, different types of revenue. Um, so we plan to include in our report a summary of the the research we've done as well as recommendation. For revenue sources to pursue. Um, so we don't wanna send committees on a wild goose chase on on every single revenue source. So thinking critically about what what makes sense um for our community. Um, the, I guess the big takeaway here related to revenue is there are no new revenue sources that are short-term or immediate fixes. Um, so you know, focusing on economic development, but knowing that that plus the other revenue op, non-tax revenue options. Um, are are longer-term um solutions for us. Um, looking at expenditures, we have uh assessed current expenditures in all the budgets. Looking for ways to reduce costs wherever we can be be more efficient. We have measured um our expenditures. Um, hang on, against our benchmark towns to see if there's anything that we're missing. Um, and kind of the long and short there that our budgets are very lean. Um, we have not found any areas um of waste or redundant services, so we'll continue to look at that, but that's, that's what we've found so far. Um, some of the the considerations, um, thi- again, things that we're, we're do, we will continue to research in terms of the recommendations. Um, is to pursue the real estate transfer fee as a potential revenue source. Uh, work collaboratively with uh municipal and school task force year-round. Um, that, you know, cer- certainly seems like a a good idea. I think we learned that also from uh Brookline. That they have a group similar to our forecast group, but they do meet year-round. Um, and I think there's some benefit to that. So that's something that, that we will continue to look into. Um, and then the budget split. Um, that I mentioned, we will, will consider to look at that where um. For this Thursday's meeting, we'll be reviewing what some of our benchmark towns are doing. So in addition to um Brookline's experience, we wanna look at at what our benchmark towns are doing in terms of that sort of um. Agreed upon percentage and if that would make sense um in an efficient way of budgeting going forward. So next steps, um, eval- uh, continue to evaluate current services and opportunities for cost-saving. Continue to evaluate the FY twenty-three budget requests and priorities. Um, as we've seen tonight and our past couple of meetings, those have started to come in on the municipal side. Um, the school budget request will be ready early January. Um, we will identify strategies to control expenditure growth. And our our main work in the report will be to develop options and scenarios and and the impact on residents. Um, and then along with that, we would like to identify areas of of further study and recommendations, as I mentioned. Um, just to remind people of the the timeline, um, we are, you know, mid. Uh, seeing the the FY twenty-three budgets, certainly in the select board meetings, the AdCom budget hearings are going on. Um, and then you will follow the normal process, January through April, May. Um, the task force, though, as you know, is expected to uh present its findings to the town administrator and select board. Um, in sometime in January. Um, so we're hoping that that can can inform the 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 other budget work that will continue on through the spring. Um, in terms of public outreach, I know we've, in in addition, obviously, to these updates. Um, we have had the online feedback form on the town website. People are using that, encourage people to continue to submit questions. Comments, um, questions I am responding to directly. Um, if it's a comment or feedback, I'm sharing that with the group or reviewing that on a weekly basis. Uh, we have decided to start virtual office hours. Um, and we had one last week, we have another session scheduled for this Thursday. So if people again have questions or feedback, I encourage you to come. Um, it'll be myself and Ness Corente. Um, via Zoom for an hour. Um, it's a good opportunity to to ask questions. Um, and also you can always email me if you um don't feel comfortable. don't feel comfortable using the online form or can't make the virtual office hours. Depending on the the response, we're happy to do more of those. So we'll tentatively plan to do some more office hours in January as well. That's it. That's, that's where we're at.
Liz, quite
A month to go.
Quite impressive. You, you have marshaled resources to make this happen.
It's a great team, I must say.
You've got a great team. I gotta tell you, Bill and I are in awe of of what you're accomplishing. So so thank you. Bill, any questions?
No questions. Great work, Liz. Thank you.
My only question is, when do you have time to do anything else? It's, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Online shopping this year.
So members of the public with questions, I see one from Diane Denapoli.
Hi Liz, Diane Denapoli, sixteen Gardener. How are you doing? Sixteen Gardner Street. Thanks for your work on this. Always try to tune in to listen to this. I have two questions. The first one, I saw enrollment for the school. I assume that current, but looking forward for the next year or two on enrollment, since there seemed to be quite a move in enrollment for Hingham Public Schools. You know, again, just trying to figure out how many students do you expect for the following year? Is that what you mean by enrollment? Or could you just elaborate a little bit?
Sure. So we've been looking at enrollment trends over the last at least ten years to get us understanding of how the enrollment is is growing with the the per, the teach staff, the school staff, as well as the budget. We know that the the enrollments is down right now due to COVID. We are expecting that to to recover and come back up. That's, but that's, that's an unknown. We can't say for certainty what that's going to look like. But we are trying to evaluate those those enrollment trends over the last decade.
Okay, great. And the second part is you mentioned benchmark towns. And that's one of those terms that seems to shift a little bit depending on what group is talking about benchmark towns. You mentioned Brookline and I think Nantucket. I, those don't jump out to me as benchmark towns. Would, is it shared online? What towns are you actually using as benchmarks for this work?
So you're absolutely correct. We are using the typical twenty benchmark towns. I don't know if that's online somewhere, Michelle, but we can, we can certainly post that. The reason I referenced Nantucket is that they have that real estate transfer fee implemented already. So that's just a model that we're looking at. But you're right, they're not a typical benchmark. Brookline is not a typical benchmark town either, but they have gone through a similar they didn't call it a sustainable budget, but a very similar process. So we have been looking to them as kind of a best practice in terms of the process and the report. So we have met with their assistant town administrator as well, just to get some more insight there. So we are, so to answer your question, we are still using the the typical twenty towns as the benchmark. We didn't want to stray too far away from that. But in trying to, you know, think creatively and outside the box a little bit, we have gone outside to see you know, other towns that that we think have best practices, we could, we could leverage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you could put your hand on. Great. And I see no other questions. Great job, Liz. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the twenty twenty two retail license renewals. Tom, if you could just explain what we're doing and go over the list. Now, the list will be part of the motion, I believe.
Sure. So, so this is just an annual effort at re- reissuing, renewing the licenses for all of the, all of the licensees in town. The annual liquor licenses, entertainment, auto dealers and and the like. You know, there's a long list of them. We have a lot of them. So I have some information regarding all of this.
Yeah, so I I guess what's important for for the select board is to make sure that we're doing our response, you know, performing our duties. And what due diligence has happened so that we can feel assured that it's appropriate to renew these licenses.
Sure. If you don't mind, just let me, just I can walk through some of that. There's a fair amount here. It's a, it's a complex process and one that's managed in our office by Sharon Profetti. So she's given me some talking points that I can speak to. So
Please.
Regarding the liquor license renewals, the annual liquor license renewals. So retail renewal applications remain a two-step process involving the licensee's obligations to renew their license and the local board's responsibility to notify the ABCC about the licenses that it has renewed. So the licensee has to apply and the board has to notify the ABCC. The ABCC sends municipalities the license renewal forms in October. The select board's office sends notice to licensees to sign and file the renewal form with the appropriate documentation and fees by November thirtieth. Licensees must be current on all real estate and personal property taxes, motor vehicle and boat excise taxes, sewer use bills, fees, assessments, bediments, or any other municipal charges. Section twelve licensees, i.e. restaurants, are required to submit a current certificate of insurance showing coverage for liquor liability and workers' compensation. And section fifteen licensees, i.e. package stores, are required to submit a workers' compensation insurance affidavit. The building department schedules inspections for each restaurant and forwards a certificate of inspection to the select board's office from the marshal, from the fire marshal slash building commissioner after successful completion of the inspection of general fire and life and safety features. And then she lists off those codes. We have received those inspection reports and they've all been, they've all passed. The select board's office also sends a list of the current section twelve restaurants and section fifteen package stores licenses to the police chief in order to, for the liquor enforcement offices to conduct their reviews. And upon approval of the retail license renewals, the select board's office will send licensees the twenty twenty two license renewal effective January first through December thirty first. So that's for liquor licenses. A couple of quick points for the other two. So entertainment licenses, licensees complete the entertainment license renewal application confirming their current license restriction and return it with the appropriate fee. And that license is then effective January first through December thirty first. And then the auto dealers, the licensees, complete the application confirming their licensed premises and hours of operation and then return it along with a current certificate, certificate of insurance and their appropriate fee. And again, those licenses run from January one to December thirty first.
So am I correct that the entities that are before us for renewals have passed each of the tests that you've just mentioned in terms of review by, whether it's the building department, the police department? And they, they all pass muster and there are no reasons that we should not renew these.
Yes, the chief is here to speak for the police review, but yes.
Chief Jones?
Good evening again, Joe. I told you I wouldn't go anywhere. The yeah, the select board appoints the detectives at the Hingham PD as your alcohol establishment inspectors. And we have had no issues at all to date with any current licensee in the town. And there's been no issues at all with the inspections that have been done to date.
Thank you.
You are.
Liz, any questions before we proceed?
No questions. It's my understanding that all the paperwork is in order and that there's actually not any new applicants or licensees.
That's right. Yeah, this is a renewal package. Yep.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So just thought, Tom, is there a separate procedure? I guess there wouldn't be a separate, it'd be a new application if someone, if there was a new a new venture that we needed to issue a license.
Yeah, that would be a whole separate issue.
And do we have a count as to the number of renewals that we, you may not have the numbers at your fingertips of the number that we renewed last year, year before versus this year?
I could get it. I just don't know what I could.
Where I'm going is I'm hoping to see an increase because Liz needs the revenue. And so you know, and and, you know, quite frankly, to make sure that businesses are viewing Hingham as an appropriate place to be sitting up shop. And, you know, if that's not the case, we should be aware of it and address. Bill, any questions?
No questions. I recall doing this last year. So
Yes.
When you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Okay, then I'm ready to accept a motion on the retail license renewals.
Liz, I'll make this motion because you did to the presentation. So I'll give you break. It's a long list.
So if you'd like, I could make a suggestion. You know, you may not want to do it this way, but in the past, we've done it both ways where you could, because the list is published as part of the agenda. You could, you could potentially approve them by categories as presented without reading them all, but
I mean, so Tom, are you sure we can do that?
Sure, no. We've done it in the past and not had a problem.
We have done. It's okay. So all right, I'm happy to do that.
Comfortable doing.
So the motion would be presented in the vote list?
Right. So, right. So the motion would be, you know, the, to approve the the, you know, the, in this case, the common victual or all that, you know, all alcohol beverages license as described on the list. It would have been helpful if these were marked as like list A, list B.
Oh, yeah.
But in any event, it's just the ones listed as common victual or alcoholic beverages license on the schedule attached to the agenda.
To the agenda. That's why we can do it, Bill, because everyone's already received.
Great. Yeah, it's always attached to the agenda. Great. I get the vote list. Okay, okay. All right, we'll do it. And if there's an issue, we can always.
Yeah, just do it by category.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, great. All right. So I would make a motion to approve the following common victular all alcohol beverages license effective January first, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty twenty two, as listed on the agenda.
As listed on the, right, the common victular all alcoholic beverage licenses portion of the agenda. Liz, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. And then the next one. I, I'm going to do the next one. I move to approve the common victular wines and malt beverages licenses effective January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty one, twenty twenty two, as listed on the common victular wines and malt beverages portion of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Liz, you do the next motion.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the following retail package store all alcoholic beverages licenses effective January first, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty twenty two, as listed in the retail package store all alcoholic beverages licenses portion on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. And now we move to the entertainment licenses. Bill? So let me stop. One second. Are there two? Yeah, I'm sorry. Right. There's the
Yep.
Yep, sorry.
So I'd make a motion to approve the following retail package store wines and malt beverages licenses effective January first, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty two, as listed in the retail package store wines and malt beverages license portion of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. So that I will move to approve the entertainment licenses effective January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty one, twenty twenty two, as listed in the entertainment licenses portion of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. And then we move to the, to be the auto dealers. Someone make that motion?
Discuss that or remind me. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Well, I'm sorry, Liz, before, yes, so this is different. You're right to raise that. Tom, are there additional issues that are raised and reviewed with the auto dealers?
Just what I stated, that they need to confirm their license premises and hours and return with the insurance, with the certificate of insurance and appropriate fees.
Okay, great. Liz or Bill, any questions on this?
No questions.
So then let's start with the class one licenses.
I will make a motion to approve the following class one auto dealers licenses effective January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty one, twenty twenty two, as listed in the class one auto dealers licenses portion of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. And then, Bill, can you do class two?
I can, but the the, but, but the vote list lists, also lists these as following class one. Are these supposed to be class two?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The vote list, the list will also list these as class.
Oh, oh, no. I think the vote list is in error. It should be class two.
Okay, Tom, is that, is it supposed to be class two?
Yeah, it should be the, what's on the agenda.
Okay, great. Okay, I just want to clarify that. I'd make a motion to approve the following class two auto dealers license effective January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty twenty two, as listed in the class two auto dealers licensing portion of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi.
Joe, we just, I just want to point out, there's one left. We missed the automatic amusement device license, entertainment license. Top of the page on the page three of the licenses section of the agenda. It's just for Lima Sports.
And why don't I even see that?
If you go to page five of the agenda.
You said it's for Lima Sports?
Yep.
Lima Sports on the vote list, it's listed as a retail license renewal.
Yeah, I think the vote list is an error. I would use the agenda. I would go by what's on the agenda.
Ah, okay. So then I would make a motion to approve the entertainment license, automatic amusement device license for, in this case, I'm going to name them Lima Sports, doing business as South Shore Sports Center. And that would be for the period, I'm sorry, effective January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. I think we're through there.
Thank you very much.
You miss anything, Tom?
Nope, you got them all. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider possible appointments. I would like to move to appoint David Gosage to the Community Preservation Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirty, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Thank you. Tom, COVID nineteen update.
Yes, thank you. Hold on one second. Okay, so the COVID nineteen update for today, December fourteenth is as follows. In Hingham, we are continuing, continuing to see a sharp increase in new COVID nineteen cases. The Department of Public Health is reporting one hundred and forty two new COVID nineteen cases during the fourteen day period reported on December ninth, compared to forty four cases over the two week period reported on November twenty fifth. So to be clear, that's one hundred and forty two reported this period over the forty four that had been reported a period prior. Hospitalizations for COVID nineteen have been increasing in Massachusetts since mid-November. And in light of these troubling trends, we are asking everyone to continue to take precautions to protect himself and others from COVID nineteen. COVID health, uh, public health protocols to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen include wearing a face mask, practicing social distancing, frequently washing hands, getting vaccinated, as well as other measures. Regarding vaccination, the overall vaccination Regarding vaccination, the overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now 77%. If you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, people ages five and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is now 82%. According to the Department of Public Health, approximately 59% of Hingham residents ages 5 to 11 have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And about 21% of residents ages 5 to 11 are fully vaccinated at this point. So now children are starting to get their second shots. The Hingham Health and Fire Departments are working to organize a regional vaccine booster clinic with the town of Cohasset for Tuesday, January 4. The clinic will take place at the South Shore Baptist Church in Hingham and will offer Moderna booster shots to residents from Hingham and Cohasset. More details, including on how to register, will be coming shortly. We may also be be holding a mini clinic for Hingham residents only on Tuesday, December 28 with limited booster shots available. Other local resources include a drive-up vaccine clinic at the Marshfield Fairgrounds on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The Johnson and Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer vaccines are all available at the Marshfield Clinic. They are encouraging people to make appointments at marshfield-ma.gov but will also offer shots to those who to those without appointments while supplies last. Those without appointments should arrive before 2:00 PM. They are offering first and second vaccine doses and booster shots. The holiday schedule for the Marshfield Clinic will be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday during Christmas week, December 21 to 23 and New Year's week, December 28 to 30, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. CVS and Walgreens locations in Hingham are offering vaccines by appointment only. Regarding testing, the governor announced on Monday that 102 municipalities in the Commonwealth with the highest proportion of families at or below the poverty level are receiving iHealth Labs over-the-counter, at-home rapid antigen test kits in an initial distribution from the state. Hingham is not among the communities selected to receive these at home, at-home rapid antigen test kits. However, the state is offering lab-based PCR home test kits at no cost to eligible Massachusetts adults. Kits are reserved for adults who are 18 and over who live or work in a congregate setting or are experiencing symptoms or have recently been in contact with someone from COVID with COVID-19 or who have otherwise been recommended for testing. Please visit the Pixel, P-I-X-E-L, Pixel by LabCorp, L-A-B-C-O-R-P for Massachusetts. That's Pixel by LabCorp for Massachusetts website for details and to request a test kit. You can Google that term, Pixel by LabKit by LabCorp for Massachusetts, and you'll find a website. CVS locations are that are offering COVID-19 testing include the CVS on Commercial Street in Weymouth, CVS on Rockland Street in Hanover, and the CVS on Main Street in South Weymouth. Many Walgreens locations are also offering testing, so please check online for appointments. Now that the town knows that we will not be we will not be recipients of a viable state testing solution, we will be investigating other local solutions and hope to report back next week on a testing plan. That's it, Joe.
Thank you, Tom. Liz, any questions on the COVID report?
No questions, just a comment. Thank you, Tom, for for all of that. And we did hear from many residents that there is a need for COVID testing. So we are moving forward with that and which is a shift from where we were last week, but with the numbers rising the way we are, it's certainly something we're going to follow up on.
That's right.
So thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Thank you.
I see no members of the public here to ask questions. But they have the chance. So then, one second here. Next item on our agenda would be public comments on items not on the agenda. I see no member of the public, but I'll ask if anyone has comments on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we move to town administrator select board reports. Tom, anything further?
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
And Art?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a few points. You probably noticed earlier this evening, I did duck out of this meeting. I had the opportunity to sit in on the Development and Industrial Commission meeting. I'm working with the chair and others to use that as a forum to explore what's happening in the development market and business conditions more broadly as we move through COVID. I'm hoping that I can work with this group to develop some input to implementing the master plan. In my first session with that group, an excellent question was posed, and that was, well, what should Hingham do first to implement the plan, knowing that conditions have changed so much? You know, as the master plan was being developed. As that group is really a research and advisory entity, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to reach out to them and work with them. And over the coming months, I'll be working with Mike in in the commission to to get other business experts in front of them. For example, this evening, they heard from Victoria Maguire, who represents who is of WS Development and represents the Derby Street Shops. There are certainly a number of different groups to reach out to, starting with our downtown association, but also looking at groups that are active and developing statewide that have some perspectives on what's happening statewide and what we in Hingham and we in the South Shore should be thinking about. Just I'd also want to share that over the past few months, we have applied for grant funding to to address different opportunities related to the Green Communities Program being one. We're waiting a response from them fairly soon. We also applied to the state Massachusetts Office on Disability for funding to help complete an ADA self-assessment and transition plan. While we've got no promises in front of us, we're hoping to hear from them by Christmas or just prior. And finally, as you know, we are making hires on the planning side with our ZBA administrator looking to join us early in the new year. I'm looking to work with Emily Wentworth on longer-term issues. One opportunity we are exploring is meeting with representatives of the from the state Department of Housing and Community Development to identify ways to move forward from the work we completed through the local rapid recovery program. There's a fair amount of attention paid to the downtown and the waterfront over the past year or so. I think we got some great ideas and we're looking for ways to to turn those ideas into into actionable next steps. And you'll hear more from all of that over the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Bill, anything you wanted to report on?
I nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Nothing further. Thank you.
No further financial updates for us. And I also have nothing other than wishing everyone a wonderful and peaceful holiday season. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Joe, hi. We are adjourned. Thank you all.